Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tupelo City Council for November 21, 2023. This time we'll have the invocation by Councilman Palmer and the pledge by Councilmember Gaston. If you will, please stand.
Father God, we just thank you today for all the many blessings that you've given us in our house. We're coming on this Thanksgiving period of time when we should be thankful every day of our lives. We ask you to be with our soldiers, our men and women of the military that are on standby and fighting in many areas, Father. We don't know how bad it's taking field this Thanksgiving, but we ask you to give them a feeling of goodwill. We thank you, Father, for the city of Tupelo and all the people that are in Tupelo, all of the people that serve with the president of the council, all of the council, the mayor, and all of his team, Father. We just ask you to be with us tonight. We're going to make some decisions, and we hope they're satisfactory to all of the members of citizens of our city as well as you, Lord. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I call on Councilmember Nettie Davis to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
Second. Motion, second. All approved. Proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda. Proclamations, we have none. Recognition of Boy and Girl Scouts, we have none. Employee recognition, Mayor?
Yes, we have a couple, and I will say that we ought to feel like we're in the safest room in the city of Tupelo tonight. So we do have one in matter of SWAT team recognition. Chief, you want to come up?
It brings me great pleasure to recognize these guys before you tonight. A couple of weeks ago, the Tupelo Police Department SWAT team participated in a two-day event. It's sponsored by the Mississippi Tactical Officers Association, and I actually competed in this exact event 24 years ago. This is the real deal. It is two days of physical, mental challenges that presses you to all your skills. And I want to recognize these six guys that participated in it. Blake Burris, Colton Bramlett, David McCree, Tyler Moore, Ben Uhiring, and Mitchell Cunningham. These guys competed against 29 other teams. These teams were from all over Mississippi, from Louisiana and Tennessee. The teams from Mississippi were the premier SWAT teams in the state, the big ones, the ones that take home these awards year after year after year. And I am glad to tell you tonight that this team standing behind me took home first place this year.
Program for Tupelo Parks and Recreation. Alex?
Well, I stand before you very appreciative of the two gentlemen that are behind me. This is our second year that we've been able to do the Healthy Heroes Program where we go into the elementary schools and teach healthy eating and the importance of exercise to all our little kids. And it's called Healthy Heroes, and the Healthy Heroes are the two gentlemen behind me. And we always have one person from the fire department, one person from the police department. And this year, and hopefully going forward, should we ever get to do this again, is from the police department, we have Alan Shavers, and also from the fire department, we have Carlos Brown, and they have been phenomenal. And they're the ones that I wanted to recognize tonight. These two are the ones that when we went into classrooms from kindergarten through fifth grade, so, and there's a huge difference between those fifth graders and those kindergartners in either doing a relay and trying to do something for the fun for the fifth graders, or just having a good time and dancing with the kindergartners. And these two guys behind me are the ones that led that, that we wanted their presence in the school, not only for the Healthy Heroes side of it, but just so they have a fond respect for the fire department and also the police department. So tonight, I would also like for you to give these two gentlemen a big round of applause for all the stuff they did for literally a year and a half.
Thank you, Alex, and thank you, guys, for your work in the school system. At this time, we go to the public recognition, and Councilman Memes, we'll start with you.
Now, I was just gonna say again, congratulations to both of those groups, and we're very fortunate, citizens of Tupelo, to have groups like that representing and protecting our citizens of Tupelo. I can speak personally on behalf of Carlos Brown that he could probably handle the same competition that the group, the first group that went through. He's a machine. So kudos to you, Carlos, and we're grateful to have you call your friend. So that was it.
I don't have anything.
Yes, I would like to thank the NAACP for giving Officer Anthony Hilton the award this weekend. I received one as well, but he too is a member of the Tupelo Police Department, and we are also lucky to have him as well, and thanks to the NAACP as well.
I again would like to congratulate the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Heroes and the SWAT team. And Travis Spear and I would like to know, Chief, if any of them would be available to do some alarm wrestling maybe a little later. Travis and I are interested in that, so thank you.
Challenge. Mr. Brown? Ms. Nettie?
I would also like to give accolades to Mr. Anthony Hill for special recognition for the dedicated service he has done in this community with the police department and working with the community. And congratulate Rosie Jones for receiving the Boyce Grayson Award for dedicated service in the community. So we were really standing out at the NAACP meeting and had good representation there from the city.
Good. Congratulations, Rosie. I would, a couple of recognitions. This past weekend, we had the pickleball tournament. Our pickleball field wasn't ready, but there was a good turnout. I think it had over 200 people participate in the pickleball tournament. Also, Park and Rec, along with Mr. Palmer, presented a Veterans Day program over at Veterans Park, and it was outstanding program. In my opinion, I think we had the first lady speaker that we'd ever, ever had at a Veterans Day program. So congratulations to you guys. Mr. Palmer was the emcee. And also to Lucia Randall and the awards for Downtown Main Street Association, our own Chuck Williams. Chuck, I forget the name of the award you received, but you did bring home some trophies, so congratulations to you. And at this time, we'll have the mayor's remarks, if I didn't get all of them.
Thank you. And I had to give a welcome to the gifted teachers of Mississippi last week. I want to give kudos to Kevin and his team. There's over 500 teachers that came to that conference, and they booked for next year, same time. So this is a good time of the year that we can have 500 and something people in our city that normally wouldn't be here. Helps hotels, restaurants, and the Coliseum. So, you know, props to Kevin and his team. And only other thing is Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And if you're traveling this holiday season, just please be careful, and that's it.
At this time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Public agenda, public hearings, and the matter of public hearings for lot mowings. Is anyone here to speak to lot mowings? I don't think I see anyone. Appeals, we have none. Citizens' hearing, we have none. We'll close the public agenda and open the regular session. Action agenda, routine agenda, and the matter of minutes of November the 7th, 2023, regular council meeting. Motion and a second. All in favor? Number five, in the matter of bill pay. Motion and a second, pay the bill. The bills were paid by Lynn Bryan, Travis Spear, Janet Gaston, Buddy Palmer tonight. All in favor? Six, in the matter of advertising and promotional items. I got a motion and a second. Ms. Hannah, you want to... Huh? We have any?
No items.
No items? No need to address them. Okay. Seven, in the matter of budget amendment number two for fiscal year 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second now, Ms. Hannah. We got...
Yes, we're asking to amend two funds, the general fund and the capital fund. The general fund, we're asking to amend that $12,500 for donations. You'll see those under Park and Rec and the aquatics facility. We're also asking to move money around, which I went over yesterday in detail, and I won't repeat that unless y'all have any questions about that. But moving on to the capital fund, we are asking to decrease the capital fund because of the difference between the actual rollover that was left and the expected rollover at the time that the budget was approved of $2,138,419. These projects were spent down quicker in '23 than we thought they would be.
Any questions for Ms. Hannah? All in favor?
Thank you.
Eight, in the matter of state-approved holidays for city employees.
I move that we would approve holidays for Thanksgiving and Christmas Day.
Motion and a second. Yesterday, the state approved these holidays, and the mayor went over them as far as the offices being closed. Mayor, anything you need to add? All in favor? Number nine, in the matter of an amendment to the contract between the city of Tupelo and Towns Construction for the construction of Gumtree Park Storm Water Drainage Infrastructure and funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to include subway, sub-award terms and conditions for contracted parties as required by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Motion and a second, Ms. Abby?
Yes, I'll speak to numbers nine through 12 at the same time. The Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality is requiring amendments to contracts between the city and all of the ARPA project contractors. So we'll be adding their attachment fee, subaward terms and conditions for contracted parties to all of the existing contracts for Gumtree Park, City Park, Highway 45 Outfall, and Van Buren Avenue.
Any questions? All in favor? Ten, in the matter of an amendment to the contract between the city of Tupelo and Hodges Construction for the construction of City Park Storm Water Drainage Infrastructure and funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to include subaward terms and conditions for contracted parties as required by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. All in favor? Oh, got a motion. Motion and a second. All in favor. Sorry, got a little bit ahead. Number 11, in the matter of an amendment to the contract between the city of Tupelo and Inscore for the construction of a sanitary sewer line along Highway 45 and funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to include subaward terms and conditions for contracted parties as required by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality.
I move that we approve the amendment. I move that we approve the amendment.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Twelve, in the matter of an amendment to the contract between the city of Tupelo and Towns Construction for the construction of storm water drainage infrastructure along Van Buren Avenue and funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to include subaward terms and conditions for contracted parties as required by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality.
Some move.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Thirteen, in the matter of review approved properties for lot mowing. Have a motion and a second. We only had one property, I think, is all we had on the agenda. All in favor? Fourteen, in the matter of developmental code amendment signs tabled at the November the 7th, 2023 meeting. We will keep that on the table. Fifteen, in the matter of developmental code amendment, mother family tabled at November 7th, 2023 meeting. Leave it on the table. Sixteen, in the matter of developmental code amendment, congregate living tabled at the November the 7th meeting. Leave it on the table. Seventeen, in the matter of developmental code amendment, major subdivisions tabled November the 7th, 2023 meeting. Motion and a second to take it off the table. All in favor? Now, we need a motion for approval. Make a motion to approve the amendment. Motion and a second to approve the amendment. Mr. Newman?
Mr. President, these amendments before you are well over a year in the making. First, I want to thank our planning department and our legal team for all the tireless hours, hard work that has gone into this. These amendments modernize our subdivision process. Tupelo continues to grow, and these amendments will clarify our process. They will bring some parts of the process back to the council that the council did not prior to have input in those decisions. And so we've had two public hearings, two work sessions with the council. We've gone over these amendments in depth and just asked the council to make, to approve these amendments tonight.
Any questions from the council? All in favor? Eighteen, in the matter of surplus guns for trade.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Quark?
Yeah, we recently purchased new handguns for the department that you approved a few months ago, and now it is time to surplus our old handguns. It's 130 handguns we wish to surplus. These will be used for credit toward the payment of our new handguns.
Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of accepting bid number 2023-049PD EOD robot.
I move that we accept the bid.
Motion and a second, Chief?
Abby helped us secure a grant from Mississippi Department of Homeland Security in regard to a new EOD robot. We received three bids. Two of them did not meet specifications, so we're asking that you accept the bid from ICor Technology in the amount of $103,988.
Any question? All in favor? Twenty, in the matter of approving items to be surplus by NMNU.
Move to approve these items to be surplus?
Second.
Motion and a second, Chief?
Our narcotics unit recently went into their technology closet and pulled out a lot of equipment that was obsolete, old and equipment that we did not use. Most of it was recording devices. Some of it is so old that it still used the old cassette tape. So we're asking that we surplus this unused equipment.
Any question? All in favor? Twenty-one, in the matter of approval of Major Surfair Committee Meeting Minutes for October the 9th, 2023.
That's up.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Twenty-two, in the matter of change order number one for fire station number two, bid Motion and a second. Mr. Lewis, are you discussing this one?
Yes, sir. I'd like to apologize to the council for making a mistake last night. I think it's the first one all year. But this is a deduct instead of an add, so we actually are saving a little over $9,000 on this.
So I had to approve it. Bill pay is basically, it's a summary of allowances the architect gave them for different things. And so if you allow them $25,000, and now they spent $23,000, then we get $2,000 credit. I think there were six items on there or something like that.
All in favor? Twenty-three, in the matter of approval for proposed change order two for Van Buren Drainage Improvements, ARP82023-032PD.
Some move.
Motion and a second. Chuck?
Yes, sir. This is for Van Buren number two. We're adding, we want to add $7,510 to the contract and increase it by seven days. This has cost us some sewer lines we have to work on and we found within that was in there. So making adjustments and repairs for those.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
You did say this was still in the budget, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is. We were doing good.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Twenty-four, in the matter of Tupelo Sports Council contract approved. A motion and a second, Mr. Farner?
Yes, this is an annual housekeeping thing that we do every year, where we bring our sports council contracts to y'all to look over and approve. These contracts are basically there for these associations and things to operate on city property and raise money and do different things. And it outlines things that we do as far as like the stuff we give back to the city, whether it be in the form of a golf cart or other things as well. This year, we're excited that we're also going to add the pickleball to this year's sports council. They will become a member of this as well. And just, again, just ask for y'all's approval. This will be a yearly thing that we do every, you know, October, November.
Question? All in favor? Twenty-five, in the matter of CVB Board Minutes of November the 7th, 2023.
That's up.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Twenty-six, in the matter of request for approval of surplus items. Motion and a second. Is this Mr. Timmons?
Yes, this is mostly generally office equipment. This obsolete. We did have the fourth item, you'll notice, we did sports lighting. When we did LEDs at the Tupelo High School baseball field, these became obsolete. You can't get parts for them anymore, so we'd like to surplus them and junk them.
Question? All in favor? Twenty-seven, in the matter of award of bid number 2023-050WL Sources of Supply 12-Month Bid.
I move that we would approve the bid number 2023.
A motion and a second, Mr. Timmons?
Yes, we do this every year. This is actually our emergency crew that does any kind of water or sewer repair outside of my crews. So I would recommend to you those bid, or the only bid is Paul Smithy Construction, who's had this project for many years, and his numbers are in line, so we approve them.
All in favor? Twenty-eight, in the matter of reward of bid number 2023-051WL Rightaway Line Clearance. Motion and a second, Mr. Timmons?
Yeah, back in the budget process, y'all approved money for us to have an additional rightaway crew. This contractor's low bid was Rightaway Pro, which was actually the company we used last year, and he had the bid of $12,200, the low bid. That's per 40-hour week. I recommend them to you.
All in favor? Twenty-nine, in the matter of approval of an amendment to the city of Tupelo Employee Handbook Policy 608 Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace. This was tabled at the October the 3rd, 2023 meeting. Got a motion to take it off the table. Do I have a second?
That's second.
All in favor?
I'd like to make a comment while I'm at that.
We're voting now to take it off the table. Everybody voted on that? All right, now we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the policy.
I got a motion and a second. Mr. Reed, you have discussion, and then we'll have questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be, I'll be very brief. This was first presented to the council back in October, first meeting in October. We've had various work sessions since then to discuss this item. We've received both positive and negative feedback from members of the council and members of the administration, also several city employees as well. Just know that we've taken every comment that's been made to heart, and they've all been waited, and they've all been considered. But we ask that you approve this policy because it puts us in the best position possible going forward in how we deal with not only medical marijuana, but also any type of illegal drug.
Councilman Gaston?
After I've considered this and talked to several people, I'm going to vote for the policy. I just want to say that while I recognize the benefits of prescribing medical-grade marijuana for certain medical conditions, it's really important that we don't jeopardize our ability as a city to obtain future federal grants. So I feel like I'm going to vote for it, but I just wanted to make the comment that I'm still for medical marijuana when used appropriately. That's it.
Anybody on this side? Mr. Palmer, you got a comment?
Yes.
Turn to you.
You take the words right out of my mouth. I'm certainly going to... Vote for this, even though I do believe there are benefits for medical marijuana. It is legal in the state of Mississippi. If the physician prescribes it and it's for pain or any other thing, I think that we probably need to look at it at some point in time. So I'm for medical marijuana myself.
I want to be supportive, supportive of the city on... I want to be supportive, supportive of the city on things that we're trying to do. And although, you know, it was questionable, I guess we had to vote on it pretty fast when we made a decision on the initial thing. And I want to be able to give support to the city on receiving grants and other things that will be helpful for the city. So I will support it tonight.
I will support...
You got a comment?
I have one. I will support it as well, only for the grants and to add to the things that we need in our city. I am for medical marijuana as well, for the sick and used appropriately.
Any other comment? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That will close the regular session and open the steady agenda. We have no item. Executive session, that's my understanding, we don't have any, a need for executive session. I think we have... Have a motion to adjourn to have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We adjourn.